Joint meeting of Grand Lake Township and Grand Lake City on Thursday, April 27th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First off, could we please have Chris lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have motion to approve the agenda? And we'll do some introductions. Do you have motion? Pay motions, is there a second? Support, okay? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Mayor, would you like to introduce your board or give you just some?
Um, I think they're probably.
Okay. Want to start with Chief down here?
Uh, he's not part of the board, but we just.
We'll start.
Hi, I'm Bob Verdet, Fire Chief. It's your turn, Carl. Carl Heiser, Treasurer, Fire Commission.
Julie Nielsen, City Councilwoman.
John Greasy, Grand Lake City Council.
Chris Douglas, Grand Lake City Council.
Jamie Ruzel, Grand Lake Council.
Paul Nass, Grand Lake City Council.
Wendy Jean Beer, City Manager.
Isabelle Gao, Grand Lake City Council.
Walt Perfum, Attorney for the City.
Susan Soderstrom, Mayor of the City of Grand Lake.
Scott Bette, Township Supervisor.
Yes, Liam Inte, Township Superintendent.
David Laddie, Township Attorney.
Kathy Lane, Township Clerk.
Todd Barnes, Fire Commission Chair, Grand Lake Township President.
Al Mansour, Township Trustee.
Joe Massing, Township Trustee and Fire Commissioner.
Ken Thomas, Trustee.
Rob Guzeg, Township Treasurer.
Clark Kent, Township Trustee.
Mike Blondell, Fire Commission City.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like if there's any public comment to address the joint boards to stand up and we'll hand you the mic and I'll give you three minutes to speak.
Why the only, I probably use people outnumbered. Oh, yeah, take the mic.
We'll use the microphone.
I'm probably the only public comment here, honey. Okay, my name is Eric 7212 Boarder Road. I just want to go over a couple of things here. At the end of 2008, there was a fire in the city. That was Big Boys. The response time was very slow to it. 2009, we talked about a fire millage. I think that's what expired, that's my opinion. 2010, we had a millage. Prior to the millage, and this thing working, there we go. Can anybody, everybody here needs to. Okay. Prior to the millage, the township's portion of the funding for the fire department was 75 percent. The city paid 25 percent. Then we'll round it off, it'd be off a half percent or so. Now it's 86 percent to 14 percent. It seems to be quite a deal for the city at the township's expense. I don't think getting more millage money is going to solve any problem. Especially when you talk about the township and its growth, it'll only create more disparity between the funding for the fire department. Currently, the act that we operate under the Fire Commission is basically a 50-50 split. So you're talking about people that are funding 86-14, but they get represented at 50-50. That's really not right for today. Because there's 8,000 people in the city and there's 36,000 people in the township. That leaves, if you go to equal funding, of these 28,000 people not represented, or 36,000 people that are spread amongst two representatives on that board. I don't think the township is represented on the commission. I realize the commission, you have to do that. I think maybe we're operating under the wrong approach. I'm curious of what, I'm curious of what liabilities and ownership is. If the contribution's 86-14, is the liabilities and contribute, are liabilities and ownership 86-14? I've heard that one town was 25-75. So I think we gotta, we gotta get that straightened out. And the tie bar, as far as millage is concerned, I would say there's no reason for a tie bar. Each municipality has their own need and way of doing business and funding sources. Tie bar and things is kind of like kicking the can, like we did last time, right back to where we were in 2009, talking about millage money. I also feel that Station 1 is inadequate for our firefighters and the township's needs. I see a face look at me funny. If we want to get a large ladder truck in there, we can't. There's other things that can't be done in the city. The firefighters are housed in a basement. They don't have a window they can look out. I mean, I'd want it on forever, so I just want to make a general statement, it's inadequate. In closing, I think we've solved the fire problem with Big Boys in the city, if we have response time and full-time firefighters of 2008, at the township's expense. The same thing we've done in the last. Get ready, cut me off. One more sentence. Now it's time to solve the real problems and not just throw money at it from the township. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, we will close.
Public comment?
Thank you for your comments. And talking with the mayor and city manager, our superintendent and myself, been in a couple of meetings and came up with the agenda. And you'll see the first item on the agenda is regarding the current model for joint fire protection and prevention. We'd like to spend a few minutes on this and, you know, we all have our opinion on whether or not that's working or not, but I think Mr. Barnes, would you like to comment with the commission on that?
Which party is this? Sorry. In terms, in terms of just the current model or the chief?
I'm the chief. Let the chief speak.
Can I get something up?
Yeah.
In somewhere? Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you for coming in this evening to listen to me talk for the next 45 minutes. I'll keep it brief. I'll go tell. Well, I gotta go over here. Didn't put down the tape for Q's.
I'm sorry.
I went well away from this now, you know, right? Okay. Presidently of the Fire Department. Let me move over here. There we go. Presidently of the Fire Department, the staff by a combination of full and part-time firefighters. Behind you are all, most of the part-time firefighters and a couple of our full-time staff, dedicated individuals that are there day in and day out, to handle the situations that were called upon to take care of. As you can see up here, first thing I just want to mention is that back in 2010, we started collecting the millage. In 2013, we were able to start hiring and start staffing the station 24 hours a day, around the clock, seven days a week. In 2016, the fire department responded to 692 incidents. It's quite a few. Back in 2010, just before we started the millage, we only responded to a little over 400, about 422 incidents, to be exact. There's quite a bit of a difference. What caused that difference? It's the people being at the station. Were being called upon to do more things during the day. Before, the police were handling it, the city and the township police department. Now it's being handled by the appropriate departments, the fire departments to handle. We were able, we were with, bringing this millage on, we were tasked with a few things. One was improve the services of the fire department to the general public and stabilize funding. Improving the services, we've accomplished that. Just as an example, first graph up there are response times. Before we started the full-time staffing in 2010, our travel time to an incident was six minutes. Our in route time, or the time it takes from the minute we get the call to get the truck out of the station and start driving, was right around seven minutes on average. Today, that truck travel time is about the same, six, 6.4 minutes, but the in route time is dramatically less. In less than two minutes, we have the truck out of the station, starting to respond to the calls. We've, in essence, taken the dispatch or in route time, response time, and cut it in half. And that started immediately. We've also increased the amount of property that we saved. By getting there faster, the fires aren't able to get as large as they happen. The graph here just shows we've increased it by 2 percent. It sounds like a small margin, but depending upon what that fire occurred in those two years, it could be a big change. Recently, this, this week, I was notified that the Insurance Safety Services Offices, ISO, granted us, or received a new audit rating. We improved, we went from a six to a five. So what does that mean for you? Well, that means as a homeowner or a business owner, your insurance rating shouldn't drop. How much I don't know. Working on that, but it is going to decrease. Thanks for going to the next one. Oh, there is another one. Okay. One other graph that was.
Which one do you want?
I don't know, that's the inspection one? Inspection one is it?
Inspection's not it, yeah.
Oh, okay. One other thing that we've recently done, in 2010, our fire inspections that the fire department performed was a little over 300. Today, 2016, it's down to 144. Why is there such a variance? Well, we went from three people doing inspections in 2010 to one. And this person handles a lot more than just inspections. Plan reviews, site reviews, public education, as well as responding to fires. So we have a lot more on that person's plate. So we'll talk a little bit later about the fourth full-time position, which is what we originally planned for, and in order to meet our goals monetarily over the years, we've never filled a position. It's been open. Initially had to fill, but through attrition, people leaving, the fire chief leaving, my appointment, we've never filled the fourth position, we've left it open. We've been robbing Peter Page Hall to get, to give it to people to care of. There's multiple other examples that we're still working on to improve our services to the community. So that's my 45-minute spiel, and I'm sorry, I got it down to 10 minutes. Okay? Thank you.
And congratulations on that improved ISO rating. Those are huge achievements.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So, as Chief Verdet stated, with regard to our goals and reducing response time, we've achieved that. Item C that we talked about, we talked a little bit about the combination of full-time and data and all. We've included a few things in your packet. You'll see that the, we have right after the agenda, the agreement that we're working on for the commission. And then you'll see some minutes from a meeting that was held on August 6th, 2010. And if you turn that page over, you'll see a few things that were highlighted from that meeting. Before going to the next section, you're going to do some background that, with regard to data, with regard to the Grand Lake Fire Department back in 2010's assumptions, one was that capital equipment fund is currently underfunded by $189,000. Number two, needs about $346,000 annually to meet replacement costs for equipment, breeding, and ISI packs. And then number four, to decrease response time from this average of 12 minutes to suddenly half minutes, which we've been successfully working on, and it requires an estimated $700,000. So those are some of the assumptions that we're working on. And then down below, the goal is for the city and township taxpayers to pay the same rates for the fire service. So that was the goal back in 2010. Okay? With that, I guess we also included a form. Do you guys have a finished or?
We give the time for these packets.
So the back of the packet.
Yep.
There's a form that we included that looks like this. Put it up on the screen for just a second. But one of the things that we wanted to do at the beginning of the meeting is talk about some of the, what do you call it, assumptions or things that we want to kind of lay out where we see the funding for these items coming from. So if you look at, for example, builder compares, we have roofs, you know, overhead doors, HVAC, and then whose responsibility would that be for? Am I correct, Dennis, and you know, move like that out? So I guess if we want to start out with building repairs, we can talk a little bit about that. I think in the agreement, it states that, what did you say? On page, on page number five, you'll see financing of the Fire Commission, and we'll see kind of layout of that, the operation agreement with the Fire Commission, it's going to be funded by a 10-year provision, half mill. And then section three, all, all major operating capital purchases and expenses, including compensation and benefits, and everything that should be paid from this budget. However, we know that hasn't always been the practice over the years. We've got the fire tower that we spent considerable money on, cities have roofs that they had considerable expense. So I guess what we need to do is, as we're, and I don't expect us to walk out of here today, I don't think the mayor does with all the answers, but we wanted to start the conversation, because we do have a millage coming up in the next two years, probably need to resolve this in the next six months, I would guess, to get it on the ballot time. But anyways, we, we wanted to see if we could come to some type of agreement on a few things, and maybe responsibility for funding on this charter is one area we can start seeing. So I'll open it up to anyone to talk about any one of these items to see who we think, I mean, we'll have to come up with a agreement on millage. Yes, Mayor?
I, I think one thing we should go to the chief again to see who's been paying for what, because I don't think it's clear what you're paying for out of your budget, and that should be clarified first. And then go to, because we all know we put our individual monies in for, you know, our roof and, you know, your tower, and then going forward, you know, where we are, because there was a capital improvement line that we don't think at the beginning was funded, the $15,000 that was supposed to be used for these type of improvements that was supposed to come out of the budget.
Well, the best way that I can respond to that is, it's somewhat inconsistent.
Yeah.
If it, if it's a major structural repair, I would, I'm assuming that both the city or the township is taking care of their own structures. If we're talking about internal items, that we've replaced the boiler at Station 1, we've had lights put in at Station Number 2 and so on, that, that's where we just need to get clarification on it. Well, who, who will be responsible for funding that, those repairs and upgrades that we need to add on?
Yeah. And I, I understand that. I just wanted some clarification as to the line item for capital improved, excuse me, capital improvements at all buildings was the $15,000 per year. And I know that there was some, you know, there, it didn't always happen, but I thought it started to happen in the last year's budget, and we were making up for that with some of the improvements made, came.
I, I wasn't aware that the capital improvement was for making building improvements or maintenance items, okay? That was my understanding.
Yeah.
So Chris, this was all talking about, I wasn't at those meetings or anything.
Right, and that's some clarification, but, but that was part of the thing. So when I look at this, and for everybody to, you know, look at it together, if we had, if you're putting $15,000 a year aside for capital improvements to the build, I mean, that's a starting point here. Is it for the building, is it for everything, and how long, you know, will that cover it? Because if it's not, you know, we have to understand that that was put aside. There's a line item for that.
I have an answer for you on that.
Go ahead.
Mr. Leamint has run the numbers, and actually, what is the averaging, Mr. Leamint, about $34,000?
$34,000 a year. So I took the major building repairs that the city paid for and the township paid for for the last six years, it came to $24,000, divided out over that six years, so $34,000 annually is, is what those building repairs are that municipalities have paid for outside of the Fire Commission budget. I think that's why we wanted the clarification, because you, I've been here for a year and a half, and it's too many times where questions have come up about is that a Fire Commission expense or is that a township expense or is it a city expense? And I think it's running $34,000 a year for the last six years. With aging buildings, you would expect that it's going to go up over the next 10 years of the length of the millage. So I just, I think, you know, we read what was in the agreement, the initial ordinance, and it said it's going to come out of that budget.
Right.
But that hasn't been the case for at least $204,000 on it.
True. And that's just over the last six years?
Since 2011.
And that's why the question of the $15,000 line item that was supposed to be used for these improvements, if it's not enough, then that's something that we have to talk about at some point, because that's in addition to the budget, that's not there, and it has to be considered in what we're asking them to pay.
Absolutely.
So I don't have any problem with that, and that's fine to go. I just, there was a line item, if it's not enough, and I appreciate that you finding out that number, so we have something to go on going forward. And then if everybody's in agreement on the, you know, the commission is supposed to be paying those, then we have to up that line item, and that's part of their budget. So they have to know they're responsible for $34,000 or if we're going to make it $40,000 a year, just like you just did the, you know, when you're taking care of your attorney's fees and everything for your negotiations, they're now paying for that. So again, we just have to know what their budget truly is.
Well, I think before, we need to figure out where we want to put that expense. If we're going to put it into the budget, or are there certain building expenses that we're reaching legally as a township or a city going to cover? So I guess, you know, that number could vary depending on what goes on with the structure, you know? It's been averaging $34,000. Some years it's been considerably more, some it's been less, but, you know, I don't know what that number is, but we're going to talk about that number eventually this evening. We have some charts that show some, some building expenses, what we anticipate those to be, and we bet Mr. Heiser and our chief project some of those. But first, I think what we want to talk about is who should be responsible. I mean, it's kind of a philosophical issue that we're looking at right now, that dollars and cents, it's who should be responsible for their, their own building. And, you know, we've got some that say, no, everybody should pay for their own building. Probably have some that say it should be in the, the fire department. So I guess we need to iron out where we see that. Ms. Lane?
Having been around longer than some of you, it has always been my personal belief, and as we talked about it over the years at the township, it was my belief and full agreement that township facilities, and we use that both as Station 2, 3, and the fire tower, were our responsibility to take care of. And so, to the best of my knowledge, any expenses that were incurred at those three structures, the township board paid for out of our additional general fund allocation, and we never took them to the city.
Okay. Any other perspectives on funding model for buildings, that is?
The mayor.
Mr. Massing?
The mayor mentioned $15,000 per year.
Speak up just a little bit.
The mayor mentioned $15,000 per year. I mean, from a business perspective, we're talking about repairing buildings, right?
Yes, that we're talking about real property, yeah.
Okay, real property. Now, I think we all will agree, $15,000 a year is not enough. You cannot do too much with $15,000. So we know the number has to move from $15,000 to some higher number. Now, what that higher number is, it has to be calculated.
Right. And we've, we've got some charts we're going to, we're going to show where we project those expenses to be. And I think what we wanted to do was just philosophically decide who's going to be responsible for those. Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Supervisor, this is a question for Mrs. Mayor.
Hi. How did you perceive this working before?
I've heard this numerous times from our township. On this side saying, well, it's always been a ladies and gentlemen agreement that this is ours, and we take care of this, that's why we paid for the tower, we paid for third cares in a hallway of some sort in our building, and that the city paid for yours. And then what happened was, over this $15,000 kitchen, now all of a sudden the light switch.
Was it $15,000?
Well, $8,000.
$6,700 or $6,200?
$6,700.
$6,700 kitchen. Now it's all of a sudden come to, no, that money's coming out of the commission. Before, how did you and your board look at the relationship between their buildings, our buildings, or was it always our buildings?
No, all, no.
Not ours being the whole Grand Lake community?
Okay, are, you're saying ours being the township over the city?
No, I, I'm, no, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, so I need to.
What I'm asking is, did you look at these, Station 1 as being your station, and look at Station 3 being our station?
That's how.
Or did you look at it, so that's how it's always been?
No, that was what it was before the millage. Like, we took care of Station 1, and the township took care of their stations. After the millage, it was our, you know, it was our discussion that money would be set aside to take care of, you know, issues that came up at all the buildings, and that was going to be taken care of. As I understood it in our discussions, it was going to be the Fire Commission would take care of it.
For $15,000 a year?
Again, that was the number that was decided upon, and.
I missed looking for a historical significance.
Yeah, so that's historical, that's where it was. They came to us, they needed a roof, we paid for the roof. So it was like, yes, it was, they didn't have the money, we paid for it.
Okay.
So now, and again, our, our council has not had this discussion. So I, it's a little bit difficult for me to sit here right now, and, you know, our council has not talked about this. So I can't sit here and I don't, we're not at a council meeting, we don't have the time in this agenda to sit here and, you know, I'm going to ask my council people, oh, well, what do you think about it? Because we haven't discussed it.
I'm just asking of historical context.
But that was the historical context that we paid for.
I'd like Mr. Barnes to speak, on behalf of the commission.
I've been on the Fire Commission since February of 2009. My recollection, when we went to the millage, it was an assistance, and maybe Mr. Freel can confirm or deny, it was a strong request from the city that $15,000 be allocated from the city's contribution specifically for repairs at Building 1, Station 1. And that was what, $15,000 was only to be used for Station 1.
That wasn't.
That's what I recall, and like I said, I've been on the commission right here.
That's fine, that's not what I recall, but that's why, you know, some discussion needs to be.
I guess we have to find the notes from some of the.
I know it was Mr. Babbard who brought it up, and he was very strongly committed.
Pretty sure Mayor Bailey was adamant that $15,000 was from the city funding to Station 1.
I don't know, what are the city council members, I don't, yeah.
No, we, that was discussed, I.
The mayor.
Historically, I mean, not, I don't know anything that he was for at the council at that time.
No, John was here and I was here, you know, and.
I mean, in terms of whose responsibility.
And Wendy, do you?
We don't have a historical.
No, I'm not saying the responsibility for all, but just saying that $15,000 sinking fund, if I remember the correct terms, was specifically for Station 1, because it was $15,000 from the city's contribution, they wanted allocated specifically for repairs at Building 1.
And see, and I remember.
Because it was your money, you said we wanted to be honestly.
Personal catastrophe.
Well, based on Mayor Soderstrom's comment, and, and my understanding of this meeting is.
is, is really is to try to get the field and some minds and some discussions about where this agenda, what's addressed in this agenda. But I didn't really think that the intent was to come out of here with decision making. Is that not the case?
Right, we're here to talk.
Because I think, is that what you're saying? We want to see what, how everybody feels about stuff. We're going to go back and talk about it in our own settings, right?
And some of the clarification I wanted from the chief was, so we could go back and discuss this, is, okay, the building repairs, so far, we've spent on the building repairs for, you know.
Yeah, honestly, I don't have that figured out.
Okay, so see, we have a lot of things that need to be clarified and that we can work on.
We actually have some of that information that we're going to cover.
But is that actually the case, Mr. Supervisor, or are we, are we expecting decisions here this evening?
I think, you know, what we're looking at is having an open, honest discussion on, on what the philosophy. We aren't going to be able to even, I mean, come up with what the total dollar amount is that we want to look at for a village. I think what we want to do is get a feel for the philosophy behind how we want the thing to operate. If we see these as our own buildings and that we're going to pay for our own buildings, or we see them as, you know, a joint operation that we're going to all pay for the buildings. And I, I know our perspective, or at least most of our perspective, but, you know, we don't know what the perspective of the city.
We haven't even discussed.
Right, but I mean individually, they must have opinions.
Well.
I want to assume that this is something that has a contact.
We haven't.
I personally want to sound a little.
Yeah, and I don't want to. Yeah, and I didn't think that was, because if that was the case, I would have brought this to council before we came here. I thought, again, we were discussing somewhat the distribution, how much we all paid for it, getting that kind of aired out, straightened out. This is more information on the table that we can have. And again, if the chief doesn't know it, I certainly don't, you know. The utilities, you know, do you pay for the utilities? And so, that could be, you pay for the utilities in all the buildings? Or does the township pay for it? But it's, it's a question here.
And what we're doing is, we want to look at moving forward. I don't know what, you know, we've done it several different ways in the past. You know, you pay for some of your buildings, some of it's coming out of the budget of fire. I guess what we want to look at is where do we want to go from here? We can't do anything about how it's operated over the past twenty years. But what we can affect is what we want to have happen from new agreement forward.
And that wasn't clear to me when we met. That wasn't clear to me that, you know, I thought we were going to, I heard some of the sound of who pays what. So, we have an idea, so our council knows what's going on. And then we can talk about it, you know, going forward. If you want to just say, okay, going forward, we need time to talk about it, it's not the place here for us.
I thought that's what we're meeting for, is to look at where we're going. I'm not sure if it's helpful, but we're looking at it forward. Yes, Mr. Heizer, or Mr. Heizer?
I almost forgot. I just wanted to point out for budget purposes, and I have a keen ear for listening to detail.
You got to speak up, Mr. Heizer, you're good.
Yes, okay. I listened to the detail and there were some requests made about this fifteen thousand dollars a year. I saw some authority for it. If you look at the budget, it's on sort of this page, page four. My, those are my, my page four. There is a budget in there for eighty-five thousand dollars that represents this amount of fifteen thousand dollars for almost six years. To date, I'm not sure what gets charged against it, but it is in the budget. So, we have reserved it and perhaps as we go forward, we will know what is charged to it.
Well, to.
Yes, Thomas?
To get back to my original question, the historical context and that, I need to look back to look forward. Where it's, you know, we just made mention that, you just said that in the past, you paid for your buildings, we paid for our buildings. But then when I go through and I look at the village request, the village writing and the articles of corporation, that was never, ever discussed, it was never written down for lack of eight years ago. So, it's your understanding right now that you take care of your buildings, we take care of ours? Well, you kind of sort of, I, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to jot anything down, I'm just trying to.
You know, again.
Well, how, how, okay, let's say that.
And we did take care of it, but if we're moving forward, I'm not, I'm not sure if we're moving backwards or moving forwards and, and where we're supposed to go. All I know is we haven't had a discussion on any of this at council meeting. So, and if you've had discussions, then you're ahead of the game. We're, we need to be.
The agenda, yeah, let me make this clear. The agenda that we came up with this mutually between you and yourself and Wendy, we, we came up with this at the same time. So, this isn't something that the township came up with and has screamed at anybody.
I never said that.
So, this agenda has been out there for over a month.
No, I never said that.
I just want to make that.
I just understood some of.
But they, our board got this the same time as your board, so.
And I went, and I tried to digest this as fast as I could in thirty days. So, I, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, because I keep on hearing things about the tower that we paid for when you were on the fire commission, Kent.
Mr. Clark? Just two years ago, we had to do an extensive renovation because of some engineering defects as well as some safety issues. And we, and we paid for that.
Yeah, how much was that?
Seventy-four thousand and change.
Is your numbers with the thirty-five thousand or thirty thou, thirty-five, was that including that seventy-five thousand for the?
That's right. And it was probably like two years ago, Wendy, that you guys put a roof on Station Number One and that was like thirty thousand dollars. So, I mean, I'd spend before some of the board, I would assume if you've been on the board longer than a couple of years. But you guys had to face it then, like, and that's why we're, we're really hoping to get some clarification. Again, it's not to be solved today, but, you know, at some point, you guys decided to put a roof on for thirty thousand. So, you weren't expecting it to come out of that fifteen thousand dollar capital fund. You were, you were protecting your own building, no different than we did the fire tower for seventy-four thousand dollars because it was our building. And that's what I'm trying to understand from an administrative standpoint, like, you know, it seemed like the township board was telling me for the last year and a half that you always pay for your own. We've got structural supports we're going to put in for sixteen thousand dollars on Number Two. And that, that's something I have to deal with in my budget. And I, I just want clarification moving forward, like, is it, isn't it? And so, again, not to be solved today, but what was the fire commission's understanding of what they were supposed to pay? What was the township board's understanding of what they were supposed to pay? You guys clearly put the roof on, so your understanding was that you should put a roof on.
Right, but what happened out of that discussion was we went and researched and found that they had to put the fifteen thousand away. And that's where our discussion began with that, that they need to be removed.
Okay.
So, we had a shame of us for not checking you, but from this point forward, you need to put that fifteen thousand away.
And we didn't have it, so we're going to pay for it because it's a roof. And we didn't want it to be leaking and it was something that needed to be done. So, we stepped up and we paid for it.
And so, for clarification, Mr. Barnes had said earlier that the fifteen thousand dollars was coming out of your contribution was going to only be used on the Station Number One in the city. But that is not your recollection, Mayor, was that it was really that fifteen thousand dollars was going to be for whatever building needs to be repaired? Thank you.
And, and the definition, I mean, I guess, that's what we need to know too, was the definition of capital purchases. I mean, is that trucks, is that building, is that? And for clarification, you know, the kitchen is in Station One, which is where they're housed. Now, if they were housed in Station Two, you'd have to put in a kitchen.
Right.
So, that's part of the twenty-four seven service.
Right.
Mr. Chief? Mr. Massey, just a little.
I'd like for something to be clarified here, for me especially. Going back to Mr. Carl's comment about the eighty-five thousand dollars. And I don't see your name, but what's your name?
Wendy.
Ms. Wendy. You, you alluded to the fact, if I understood you correctly, that township may not have been putting fifteen thousand dollars aside.
No, I, I didn't.
What did you say?
The fire commission, fire commission.
Okay, but Carl stated, Mr. Carl stated that there's about eighty-five thousand in one line item?
It's in the line item budget for two thousand seventeen for the first time.
Right.
I don't know what to charge to it yet until we have agreement here.
Right.
Yes?
Well, that's kind of, I guess, to a point. I said we weren't going to walk away with agreements, but we could walk away with philosophical decisions, right? So, the idea being, as you heard Wendy say, that they discovered that the fifteen wasn't put in there. But had it been put in and had it been possibly in reserve, would the, would I, would I be agreeing to put in that thirty thousand dollar roof on the, on the city building? And my, my answer to that would be, based on our past practice, would be the answer to that would be no. Because, you know, this is like the repair we did to the, to the training tower, right? Or the wall out in Three. So, then I guess that's what we need, we could kind of walk away with those kinds of, you know, kind of consensus, right? But I guess from Mr. Griffin or Mr. Laddie, unless this would be putting you on the spot and you guys need to kind of get together, what, is there a legal opinion on, you know, minor repairs, light switches, kitchen remodels, microwaves, those kinds of things, different story? But if we were to have a roof collapse, Mr. Laddie out on Three, I mean, is there a legal issue? The commission does not own buildings.
Right, that's, that is true. And we have had that opinion shared, actually between Mr. Griffin's office and mine. Again, as we made reference in Section Three of the agreement, you have, and it relates to purchases. It says all major operating and capital purchases and expenses, including compensation and benefits, should be, should be from this budget. But I, I understand historically exactly what you understood as well. Now, I know, again, we, we have determined that the commission itself can't own real property. And Mr. Griffin, if you have a different opinion, I'll certainly defer to you on that. So, we have, I think that that concept has been, since, since the commission doesn't have the right, they wouldn't have responsibility to maintain the real property. But again, I'm going to defer to the folks that were here, serving in those roles back then.
Mr. Griffin?
Well, I think that, I think he's correct in the, the extent that the ownership falls within the city or township, depending on where that building is. From a general legal opinion, without an absence of agreement, it would fall on the owner of the building to have that as safe building to which it would be used for whatever visit purpose it is. So, that would mean if you took that to its conclusion is the city be responsible for whatever buildings they own and the township is responsible for whatever building they own, that's setting aside an agreement otherwise. So, I mean, if you, you have agreement that there's going to be a budget, it's going to be used for certain items within the entire fire commission, you can do that. If you said, we aren't going to have an agreement on anything, I think the owner of the building is responsible because if you take it to its ultimate conclusion, if there is a dissolution of the fire commission, who owns the buildings? Those people who are either in the, always either in the deed, in the city or deed and township.
Ms. Lane?
To move from the past again to where we are today or going forward, I personally am totally satisfied with the township taking care of everything that's in the township and is our structure. Whether it's, you know, if it's a light switch, I mean, we have people that can change the light switches. But I have no problem personally with our taking care of our buildings, and I don't even need a legal opinion, although I respect both of you, for me in my value system to say, I'll take care of the township buildings. We built them. We built the tower back in the eighties, I think, in order for us to train our fire department. And we just did it. And that's, I think, that the city and the township are stronger when we're together. And if we can have, like I'm, I've always felt, we're a family. We can agree to handshake and we can still have differences of opinion. And I thought tonight, that was all we were going to do. Our family was getting together and saying, hey, we're growing, yippee. Everybody enjoys our community, yippee. How can we now, when we have a terrific fire department, make it better in the next five years or ten years and plan for it like we would if we were doing our own home? That's all I wanted to do tonight, not to have, just to have a consensus of how we feel and then we can get down to nitty gritty and Walt and David can diagram sentences.
Well, then, there, you know, Kathy, you bring up a good issue in that, you know, we are growing. I'm sure the city will have growth as well. You know, there becomes the point where we need another fire station, do we need more staff, what have you? So, I think, you know, our, my discussion with our leadership is that, you know, rather than just making an agreement for this millage that deals with the next year and then we're back at this three years from now trying to figure out how do we pay for our growth, we need to build into our, our plan where we're going the next five, ten years so that whatever millage we pass, if it's a ten-year millage, we're not running short. I think some of the graphs we're going to get to here in a few minutes will explain some of that, you know, looking at, looking at future projections on expenses, where things are going so that when we do plan that next millage that we're covering our basics, you know, that there might be something as far as land acquisition or additional buildings in the future that we need to look at, and whose responsibilities are those? If we're in this, if we're taking it out of the budget, then we need to plan, looking at what the millage is going to be, then we need to factor that in. So, these are simply, these are kind of assumptions that we wanted to have before we start taking a look at what the millage would need to be. Because when we're looking at projecting expenses, we need to figure out which category we're putting in. If these expenses are going to be in our, our general operating budget for the fire commission, then we need to project that. If they're going to be in our own budgets, then we need to maybe subtract those from it. So, I don't know. This exercise is something that we want to see if we can come to any, I don't know if we can come to any agreement, but if people have opinions on it so that, you know, we know where people stand, so when we go back, we can, you know, we, we kind of have an idea. I, I really don't know where the city stands on who they think should be responsible for, for buildings. I heard your opinion, the attorney's opinion, but I, I don't know where it feels one way or the other, but I know people have definite opinions. We haven't taken a vote or anything of that nature.
Well, I agree with Kathy that we are a lot stronger together as a community in Grand Lake. And it's just some of these things we just have to figure out. Because, you know, before we know it, it's budget time again and our village is gone. And we need to figure out if we're going to take care of our buildings, their buildings, are we going to, how are we going to do this? You know, we're not going to vote on anything, this isn't law, I, I hope not, Attorney Laddie.
No, no, this is just a, a meeting exactly as we have all described.
Right. I know, but we are stronger together. If we haven't put eighty-five thousand dollars into the budget to take care of building repairs, because that's what it's going to be, you know, when I'm looking through everything, it's going to be about eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars into our capital improvement plan for the four, the three buildings in the one structure. I mean, you have to look at, a roof's not going to last thirty years, you know, forty years. So, we have to, but are we going to put it in our budgets? Are we going to put it into the chief's budget? I'm sorry, the commission's budget?
Mr. Massey?
So, so, you know, we, some of the issues that have been brought here are historical and that's interesting. But I think the main portion of this is, the main point of this is to move forward. And it seems like there's a little bit of imbalance here between maybe the more time that the city had a chance to consider these things versus maybe some of the time that the township, for one reason or another, has thought about it. So, it's probably the case that we can't come even to an agreement here on how the city as a whole feels about these things. But maybe one place where we can come to some kind of an agreement is how we're framing what we would project as the cost of our, of our fire service over the next number of years. And then maybe the next step comes divvying up or understanding, you know, how we choose to find that. Because that might be information you can all kind of look at and agree without having to make a specific commitment.
Is your suggestion, yes, Mr. President?
Yeah, I think we have to do something very quickly because right now, the budget, I mean, they don't have enough money to fund the, the capital improvements for the trucks. They're short right now, they're taking our funding money that's supposed to go to trucks and they're spending on stuff that they have to have. Well, they had got to do it. And the same thing happened with that fifteen thousand that's in there. Well, they had to buy equipment, they had to buy other stuff to survive, and to protect the whole city and township. So, to me, you know, we have to get more money and we're just trying to discharge and decide, okay, is it going to go on this? okay, is it going to go in this, in the chief's budget or is it going to go in the township and the city's budget? That's all we're deciding here and then we're going to build a budget that has to cover it because he, right now, he lost money last year. He's going to lose more money next year. And they don't even have the full four, four guys. They've only got three guys and they're supposed to have four. Because they're, they're doing what, the money that they have and trying to make it work, which is what everybody wants, which, you know, anyone would do that. You only have so much money, well, you fix it any way you can and get it done. That's what they're doing, but we're in a deficit, we're all in a deficit, it won't make it. I mean, if we don't do anything, these trucks, we'll be able to buy any trucks, we'll be able to buy any equipment or anything.
One of the things I don't want to belabor this, I think, unless somebody has a great idea that we can come to an agreement, I, I think these items here are going to be things that our boards obviously need to chew on and figure out.
So we're not going to go through the questions then?
Well, I'm not sure, I mean...
For simple things that I, I'd like to, you know, it seems that it would be kind of, do you pay your utilities? Is the township paying? I mean, there are some things that are fairly easy here. It seems to me the biggest question is the, the buildings themselves, you know, the roofs, the, if there's a crack somewhere, who's going to take care of the actual physical building there? So that, that becomes a different, if everything else we take care of, you take care of, or they take care of and we're okay with that, it seems to me the building is the, the essence of what we're talking about. Who's going to take care of that? The first time I'm hearing now, you're all, a new building, this is all, you know, wow, that's new to us. And that, that becomes another question about what, how that budget is made and what those costs are going to be and how we look at those as a group. And, and that's a, that's a long time discussion, it's not for tonight. Some of these things, what I would, it was like, I don't know the answer to that. I didn't ask the chief, "Do you pay your utilities?" So if you pay those for, for all the buildings, then that's, that's off of here.
The only one that we don't pay for is station number two because it's housed in the government center. And that would be a percentage of the bill.
Okay. So that's kind of taken care of. The routine building maintenance as of now, lighting, painting, flooring, et cetera, have you paid for that or has...
Depends on what it is.
Let's check them off.
Well, that's what I was trying to do so that we could just at least get something, you know, off the table that we know that this isn't an issue. And that's what I thought we were going to do.
Mr. Manzur's got to jump over here for a little while.
I have a concern, ma'am.
Yeah?
Miss Ma'am?
Sure.
I feel as though your city council is at a disadvantage.
Yeah.
I was under the impression coming into this meeting that you had already discussed these issues with your city council because I was under the impression that you had ample time to do that. But now I have learned, I think from you that you alluded to me, that you didn't, you have not done that. Is that true?
No, you're right. You're correct in that. We haven't discussed this to this detail. It was coming together to look at some of these, to have some input and then to sit and talk about it. We were coming here and even though, you know, the four of us got together, it was like, oh yeah, we're feeling this all out, you know, there are a lot of questions out here. Just like, oh, possibly a new building, which is, you know, like, okay, you know, and, and who's that falling to and is that the discussion that we're having? I don't know.
Well, I think, I think the reason why I brought up the building is this, what I'm saying is that we don't want to necessarily just plan for an agreement that lasts one year.
I appreciate that.
I'm not sure, you know, what 10-year, we've got some graphs and charts of what it looks like your capital equipment needs over the next 10 years.
And that's all going to be news to me because I haven't seen any of this. Either has council and so it's like...
And our board has gone over that.
Okay, so let's look at this, I don't have a problem looking at it as a starting point and then going back, you talk to your group, we'll talk to ours, then we can get together if we have, you know, to discuss this.
Mr. Heiser's had the same thing.
Yes, I'm looking at the same grid that you're looking at here. In the, in the order of taking the first step, under utilities, the chief and I have gone over this and we're recommending here, like station, station which we're already doing, the fire commission pays for that and station two, the township pays for that and then station three, the commission pays for that. I recommend we continue with that process unless there's other ideas. It's worked fine, we've been paying it consistently.
Okay, I didn't hear, is that utilities, Carl?
Yes, utilities.
That's the only item you mentioned?
Yeah, I wanted to get one block done.
If I could, I'd like to make a suggestion. It sounds, you know, as Mr. Manzur mentioned, that your board and our board need to take another look at, at these expenses. You know, history is good of how it's occurred, you know, maybe, maybe it isn't good, but we need to look at, as our individual boards, as to what we see as philosophically how we want to move forward on these things. So I'm not sure us going through the current budget and saying, "Well, township pays for this right now and the city pays for that, so let's keep doing that." I think we need to come up with a philosophy that each of our boards say, "Here's how we want to approach this in the future." And then when we get back together again, we have an idea of where your city council feels that these expenses should go and our township board. Because right now, I think we're going to be here forever going through current practice and, "Well, I feel it should be this." So, it doesn't sound like there's any real unified effort and I think we'd be better served, just my opinion, but maybe better served to take this back.
Even though we do lack a lot of information and we're trying to catch up here...
Right.
As a newer council member, I do appreciate the historical basis for some of this and I do like to know what is actually going on with this stuff...
Sure.
Before we can actually move on with council so that we can come up with some viable recommendations that would possibly work for all of us.
Sure.
So if we could go back, you know, when we're asking questions about this whole place, I think that's great.
Right.
Because I feel like, I almost feel like I'm being attacked right now.
What I'd like to do is give you the time to be able to get that perspective. I don't know if you want it, because we're rookies too, Kevin.
I, I understand that, but you, you guys have at least talked about it a little bit in some cases and I'm not even on the board.
If everybody wants us to spend time on going through that, we can.
The chief and, and the treasurer have some of those answers. I thought that's what we were coming together for. We still have 10 minutes under the agenda for, for this.
Can we get to that, 10 minutes of hers outlining?
If we don't, if Carl and, or chief...
I don't know who's paying what right now.
Sheriff, you want to go to the snow removal, lawn care, landscaping at this present time in the city?
Yeah.
Handling their own, strong buildings. Under routine building maintenance, this is where it's going to get a little muddy. If it's a simple light fixture replacement, simple one, it's fine. But for example, the light fixtures at station one, developed since 1971, some of them don't work in the apparatus bay. Those totally need to be replaced. So if it's that one that the fire commission is going to handle, or is that one that we would be looking at the city to handle? That's the question there.
Okay.
With small line items, we, we will handle those, painting and some simple...
Chief, is there a dollar amount that you, that comes to mind that triggers it?
Right off the top of my head, I don't have one. But that's something that we could put together and be able to come back to the, the group with.
What's the trigger?
Yeah, what's the trigger to say this is you and...
That says, maybe you should do it or we should do it, which would be good.
Right, yeah. The fire commission can do it, we can make a presentation back there.
Okay.
Have we replaced overhead doors for the fire commission budget? Just recently replaced, correct me if I'm wrong, we repaired or replaced the overhead doors, did we not?
Yes, we replaced doors.
At station one?
Station one, we replaced, repaired doors in station two.
Where did that one come out?
That came out of our budget.
Okay, and you replaced doors at two?
Yes.
And that was out of the fire commission?
Yes.
Three have you put for, for this routine building maintenance except for now that there are some physical ones that you're saying you'd want to ask us for or not? Has there been anything at three?
Nothing major at station number three.
Okay, that...
We had some major repairs there.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the township, so that's good to know. Township is paid for those, which is good because then we have a check. So we know what's, what's going on there.
Why would he...
Chris Guzette?
Oh, that's all right. Go ahead.
Okay, so snow removal, lawn care, landscaping?
That's, the city takes care of their own station, the township is taking care of their own properties there.
Okay, so they take, township takes care of two and three?
Yes.
City takes care of one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The building renovations, that's obviously been part of, that's been a mixed bag.
That's another mixed bag and we use a $15,000 trigger, gives us the better idea if that's solely for building renovations or building maintenance, let's say.
Okay.
Something like that. We can, we can work in that, but items over $15,000, we'd have to come back and go to the individual owners of the buildings, it's called.
Okay.
Anything else?
I did it. They're renting. Why couldn't we take the philosophy that if this was an apartment building and they were renting, the owner pays for what they're supposed to and the renter does what they're supposed to do because that's basically the relationship we have?
I think that's what we're trying to figure out.
Is there a different lease relationship where renters pay a whole bunch and, you know, depends what kind of...
It seems like the door shouldn't be paid by the commission.
I think, I think it's a good analogy. Yeah, we're trying to figure out what the lease agreement is, basically.
Yeah, right. Because it doesn't seem like the door that the commission paid for, they should have paid for, that's the building. Doors...
I concur. I mean, I don't, if I was renting an apartment and the garage door broke, I'd call you the owner to pay for it.
I think that we both have our own buildings and we should take care of the building structure individually. The things that go for the fire department to actually operate need to be shared.
That's good.
Do you know what I mean?
What sort of...
So if it's our building and it needs a roof, we put a new roof on it. But if it's something that directly relates to them being able to do their job, not being housed, but being able to do the job, then it's collective.
So one way of describing it is real property versus personal property. I don't know if it's different. Real property meaning the actual physical structure of the building, personal property meaning anything that we can really carry out of there and use for fire drive by, yes, Mr. Manzur?
So is that, is that how you interpret it or do you interpret things like renovations of kitchens, sleeping quarters, et cetera, as being part of how firefighters do their job?
I think because that's part of their job, I mean, they need that to do their job, right? Because if they're in station one, they're housed there, they can be housed without a kitchen, so that's a collective expense.
Yeah, but if...
Okay? But if the basement needs to be redone because the driveway is crumbling, we own that building, we need to take care of that. That's how I think of it.
And maybe this is a good starting point for each one to come and hash it out together, you know, that you look at it because obviously you've got different, I'm hearing all kinds of different things, I'm hearing a few different things here. We need some time, but we have a starting point here, at least. We, we have, are we all in agreement, we'll take care of the buildings or not or, you know? So we need to, I think, come back and spend time on that as each person.
Was there another comment? I thought I saw you sleeping before the question. All right.
Mr. Supervisor, going back to the utilities, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but can you explain to me why the fire commission's paying for the utilities and one and three for, the two and the township? I know that it's housed in the government building, but I know that, well, I know for a fact that Mr. Limbiter could actually cut that out and would make more sense to me than it would be paid all the buildings through the fire commission.
It could be done, it just has not been done in the past.
Well, that really should be done, even at the 80-20 split, you know, it still should be done that way. I'm sure you get that number.
And we can revisit that as well.
Yeah, that's, and that's fine because now we have a, we have a starting point.
Right, yeah, I agree, totally. I like the idea about real property and love that, I would say.
One of the things on the agenda, just to keep moving, is item P under number four was agreement on equal funding through millage and match. And so, I don't know that we're going to agree on that tonight or, unless somebody has some discussion point on that. Yes, Mr. Lane?
Well, I'm here like, I think most of us are, let's get to these discussions. And I'm saying, we as a philosophy felt that having the same half mill in the city and the township and our matching that half mill made it equal for every resident. And it was based on your taxable value, so if you were poor, you were paying the same as somebody that had more money. And I think keeping it equal is going back to, we are stronger when we're saying to our residents, "We are treating you all equally."
So you're saying the match that the township puts in, the amount that the city puts in should...
Right. Whenever we're talking about millage, we should be talking about the city residents and the township residents paying the same millage. And if the budgets, when we look at them for the next 18 years, need us to match it with general fund monies, it's the same thing. You would match the, you know, you would match the half mill or the mill or the 29 mills we're going to add.
I'm not sure we have the full mill to match in our budget, Mr. Manzur.
So I, I think that the idea that Ms. Lane has of common amounts of millage rates for the city and township, I think that that's a solid, certainly one that's completely defendable. Now, how that all gets, you know, mis, how that all gets funded between actual villages and general funds, I mean, I think that's something we can, can address at a later point. But I think fundamentally, you think it's fair to have the same amount of millage rate from the residents of the city and the township to fund the fire.
I don't think there's ever been a question about that, Al. From the beginning, I think that's what got the fire millage passed the first time. It was because finally there was equity. And, you know, we're all getting a service, we're all paying, I'm paying the same as you are, it doesn't matter where you live, where I live, that fire, I have a fire, I want that truck there. And so I'm paying the same as you are for the same service. And I think that's, again, what had the fire millage pass when we came forward.
I agree with you, Ma'am.
There's no genuine, there's no honesty that I've ever heard from residents that, hey, we're, they're getting better service because of us or that, we're paid equal amount. Nobody can honestly say that one municipality, you treat them better.
And then the whole issue when it came up, besides the equity, it was the timing. That was a critical piece of this because it didn't matter where you lived. We had a fire in the city, it took 13 minutes. Because people say, "Oh, it's, you know, station one is right there, so you get your service." No, we didn't. Things didn't happen, but we're down, everybody is getting that service. That's what we were looking for, so we have equity and we have, you know, everybody's being served to the same, you know, extent. So I couldn't agree more, Kathy.
I think we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is, are we prepared to meet the future needs of our communities? And one of the slides that our fire chief provided us, I think, let's see. It's Deb Crowe, right there. Who wants to, Carl?
Oh, who's this, Carl?
Mr. Heiser, would you like to talk about this a little bit?
Let me get the slide, get the right page here. What this slide presents, that I put together with my, under, you know, my own format and the source documentation are the audit reports from you and you. Those can be easily compiled and looked at. But what I'm trying to do in the very first line, it says, "General funded," it should say revenues, in other words, revenues. And I showed the revenues, these are actual, from the audit reports, the 12, 31, 16, which And, and I looked at the first full year after the millage was passed in 11, was 1, What I discovered, as I mentioned here, the revenues have basically flatlined with the millage and the contribution. It's flatlined, we're not all of a sudden going to pick up a half a million dollars, it's been flatlined. And so we're looking at really revenues that we've been counting on since 2011 and here we are in 17. However, expenses have increased, just like the price of a car from 2011 to 2017. And I looked at the general fund expenditures for 16 and this is off the audit report, so we're at 1,045,011. And, you know, we were very low in 2011, I mean, 2011 at 642,977, a fact is a fact. A fact is a fact. This is from the audit report. And so, you know, our general fund has increased from 2011 to 2016 by budget and also being organized in 2014, we've increased 402,000. Now, in my comments here, which are, I believe, fair and balanced, general fund revenues have been leveled for the last seven years, for the seven, you know, city and township. That's a fact. You can look at the audit reports. The fire, the fire department, general fund expenditures increased 402,000. And that's sort of dramatic because that's not a very good comparison. This is, but that was what the expenditures were. And then we went forward for, you know, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. Now, this is with a half mill. And the half mill, you can see what it's going to be if we stay with the half mill. And so what I did, these are factual, what you're looking at here is factual information, not projected. So I looked at this and I said, first I thought we were going to go for a five-mill millage and then I was told, then just let me know. And no, it's 10. And so initially, I thought we could wiggle by for five years at a half mill. Then when the 10-year millage schedule was being worked on here, to me, it was very clear the half mill would not work for 10 years. I haven't determined, well, not me, but there has to be a determination of what the new millage would be after all the research and sorting out that the information comes together. I'm just looking at trending and I've been doing this for 30 years. So, you know, I felt that we need to look at it. I threw out, just for discussion purposes, it should be at least a mill, maybe less, but that's a benchmark I feel comfortable with. But executive decisions and agreements have to be put in place before we determine what this new millage would be. And then I say, going forward, this would probably never work, but I put it down there. Number four, going forward, I think township and city contribution should be reviewed every two years if necessary, if it goes up or goes down. Don't just say, well, we passed the millage 10 years ago and that's what we're given. I mean, stick your head in the sand then, all right? Be realistic, let's take a look at it. And this is a joint effort. We have fixed, it's like someone who's retired when I give them a bill. I'm on a fixed income, Carl, I can't pay your bill, you know? So we've got to recognize we have a fixed income and expenses only go one way, and that's with our healthcare and our union contracts and the cost of supplies and equipment. Fire trucks may have cost $600,000, maybe two years ago, three years ago. We're looking at eight and a half, $850,000 or more. A brake job is not 999. It could be, it could be as high as $8,000 on some of these vehicles. You know, this, these are big ticket items. But that all, you know, needs to be understood and come back. So I showed where we were and I didn't have a particular direction I was going with this. I'm just reporting the facts. And you can't ignore facts and ask history, and these are trends. Amen.
With what we, let me see what order, kind of out of order with the slides here.
Just for clarification, just for clarification, the general fund expenditures from 2011, just so we can look, because we're using this to look at these recent expenditures. Was that before we had full staffing, that number?
Mr. Heiser, did you hear the question? That on the sheet that you were going over, the expenditures from 2011, did that include the staffing levels that we had?
No, it did not. But I did point that out because it was not a very valid comparison because we didn't have the staffing levels that we had to go to in '13 and '14. But that is a fact, I'm just looking back at it. The fact I just concluded that we're, you know, flatlining our revenues and our expenses are increasing.
Thank you. Mr. Limiter and Mr. Heiser and fire chief using their numbers, would you like to explain the projection here for wages and benefits?
I'd love to.
Everybody has this particular graph in the packet.
In your packet, there's a bunch of them. They're not all going to be on our PowerPoint. And you don't necessarily have this one in your, in your big white. We'll show you just some of the assumptions that we put together going up through 2030. There's a sheet that actually breaks it down that looks like this. It's in the packet where the numbers are coming from. Those assumptions were put together by Chief Predet with wages based upon an anticipated 2% annual increase through 2030, with the cost of health insurance at 4% potential increase through 2030. Again, these assumptions were based on what we think is a relatively conservative estimate, but to just to show that the potential for growth and what would happen when you take the total from 946.5 for 2017 and project it out to 2030, you're looking at an increase up to $1.3 million. So as we work on where we need to be for funding for that next 10-year millage, we have to be able to kind of project out and base a set of assumptions. I don't have any magic eight ball that tells me that I'm getting it right on my assumptions and I would certainly be open to anybody who has, believes that they have better assumptions than I do, then I think we could go by that, but...
Does this curve here reflect constant number of people and staff, just wages and benefits? Or does it reflect anything?
It's with what we've got right now. If we, all of these assumptions were based upon, we're going to operate exactly like we're operating now.
Okay, so that's not an additional person?
It has the position that's vacant right now funded because the numbers came directly from the 2017 budget, numbers that were provided by the fire department. If that position was funded, this is what the cost would be.
Okay, so that, that's...
So we currently have it vacant and we have it vacant because we don't have the money to fill it.
No, no, I understand that, but I just wanted to look at this and know if I'm looking at a number that's telling me we're paying for five people or looking at a number that somebody was paying for four people.
So if you have...
Because that's an assumption that we still...
If you have concerns, you can back $75,000 back out of that number.
Yeah, okay.
But it is the current budget for 2017.
It's in their operational plan and has been. We just haven't been able to afford to fund it.
So just to clarify that, that's four full-time people and the rest are part-time, right?
Correct.
That we have now.
Right, we only have three, three full-time at this point, but we put in four full-time.
With our numbers.
With the chief, we have four, right?
You have, at this present time, taking myself out. That's a one full-time position, but it's not counted as part of the original four when the millage was conceived.
Right, because the chief was there before, we got the full...
That's right. So right now, you have three full-time firefighters that are on duty.
Right.
Chris Calabrese, inspector, and two working 24-hour shifts. So you have one open position.
And that doesn't include you, right?
I'm off to the side.
Yes.
I've got a question for the chief. Chief, would that reflect to replacing the person you think you need, who is a long-term office assistant, the person administrator who...
No, this is not a senior.
Is that a person that's not administrative assistant?
We do, but for these purposes, we didn't, we didn't put that in.
Mr. Cott?
But if I understand, Mr. Limiter, that's baked in here because this is out of the 17 budget personnel, correct?
And they didn't have the administrative assistant or like the part-time or office manager, I think baked into their 2017 budget.
They don't have that in there.
We do not.
So that was left out of the projections. And what we're trying to do is take the current model as it exists today, and they are desperately trying to fund that other position. So we included it to say if we're going to meet the demands of the current model. And that's why it's like, are we prepared to meet it? Will our future, you know, does this model work and are we going to continue the model? And that's what we base the assumptions on.
So we have a few others. Can we go through the others?
And so that's just a projection from wages and benefits and what that looks like. We look at fire funding and in your packet, the first one you had assumes that their funding would increase because taxable value increases at a rate of like 1.5% per year. As you're well aware, when you look at the projections that they made in 2010 when they were putting this together, I think they did a really good job of putting back together. Of course, nobody knew that the Great Recession was going to be as steep for as long as it lasted. And we lost a tremendous amount of taxable value, which greatly impacted what their projections were. In fact, in the, inside the packet also, there's a copy of minutes from 2011. That was after the millage had been passed and they, the city and township were working together, putting their assumptions together. I think that's kind of telling as well, that talks about, okay, the millage has passed, you know, this is how we're going to move forward. Nobody could have anticipated that the taxable value loss, just in real property, commercial property. And we continue to battle it today. It's important to remember, like with the personal property tax that the folks in Lansing have picked out of our pockets for the next five or six years, that money's going to go away and it's not coming back. Reimburse this through the essential services. I think we got ours in February, it's $15,000. I don't know what the city got last November, but it's nowhere near makes up for what the millage losses have been due to taxable value loss. We're at 80% of where we were in 2007, 80% taxable value. We built 100 new residential homes every year for the last four years. We had $35 million in commercial additions by a year in taxable value, and we're still at 80% of where we were in 2008. So because it's a millage-driven revenue budget, you've got to understand that those projections that they made in 2010 were probably good projections, but nobody could have anticipated that we'd be where we are today. So me putting this out here through 2030, again, I don't have a magic eight ball that tells me I'm getting it right. I did it at 1.5%. If we, if we leave the funding as it is, it's at a half a mill and a half a mill match on our general fund, we're really talking about a one-mill, we're funding our fire operations for the entire community at one-mill. If we continue to do that out at 2030 and we are able to grow our taxable value and increase our millage capture by 1.5% per year, we would be able to get that revenue up to If we keep on looking, knowing that what just happened with wages and benefits, and Scott, if you would go to this one, and you, if you look at, that bottom line is showing the trajectory, if we do nothing of where our funding level is and at top being where our expenses will be. Why do we have such a huge gap in 2017 when we know they delivered us a balanced budget? It has to do with the capital needs. And if you look at the projections that the fire chief put together, it's the last page in your packet, probably, it's a real eye chart. And we won't put it up, but it's, it shows you the trucks that are probably going to have to be replaced. And the next still based it on a 20-year useful life. It's going to go in and show you support vehicles, defibrillators, breathing apparatus, turnout gear, pagers, hose, extrication tools, thermal imaging cameras, breathing compressors. And based on a useful life, we came up with what an annual cost would be, and that number came up to $368,643. If we want to be able to knock bond or pull more money out of our general fund, what should we be giving? What should we deliver to the fire commission so that we can pay for all of those things out through the 2030? It's going to be $368,000 a year. I think what's interesting in 2010, their projection was $347,000 per year is what they needed. And that's in those minutes from the 2011 meeting. They were projecting we were behind the eight ball, but we needed to make sure that we were putting capital money away for rolling stock and turnout here, we were supposed to be at that 346,000. I think this year with what Carl had projected to put over there, we're still falling 107,000 short of that number. And our projections are now that the new number is really $368,000 a year for what we need just for these items of capital. Doesn't include building capital or anything.
Dennis, this, so you know, this includes, what, 20-year life expectancy on the equipment or 25?
We get 20 years on the rolling stock.
Yes.
Which is probably at the extreme, I don't know, leave that up to the chief, but...
Yeah, the FPA standards state that 20 years is the life expectancy of a frontline apparatus and then it's out of service. They're actually saying now, do it 10-year increments and get newer, safer equipment in at 10 years and be able to have some residual value in the equipment that you can sell. Right now, we have a pumper truck at our number three station that's been there for three years. It's been for sale for three years and we've not had any offers on it whatsoever.
And insured.
And insured.
What year is that?
1993.
You've had it for sale for three years.
Yes. Okay. So in looking at this change to do the 10-year mark, all the vendors I've dealt with have said, you're going to get a higher residual value, a resale value, and more apt to have people buy it than a 20-year-old truck at a 10-year, 10-year mark.
Do we want to run through any of the other three apps here?
Well, I think if one note is like, you look at 2030, what would be the difference? And again, I've included that capital need in there. You're talking about $447,500 difference out at 2030 that we would be underfunding our fire department at the current one-mill funding level. Can you go to that next slide? And what this does is I just took the, if we decide going through that chart about who paid for what, if we decide that those major building repairs are going to get into the fire commission's budget like the ordinance currently reads, then what I did is just looked at what we spent over the last six years and took that average of $34,000. I put a 5% inflationary increase on that across the span through 2030. And just to show you that then the difference becomes about $512,000 difference out at 2030 that we would be underfunding our fire operations at the current one-mill funding level, shows that, you know, $500,000 annual, $512,000 annually. Kind of give a rough idea of where we may need to talk about where the millage is going to go to unless we're going to change our operational model in some way.
Yes, Mayor.
I have a question. So have we put into this model, if we do sell a truck, I mean, Carl was saying, when I spoke to him, that was 15 years. Now that's in 10 years, so I'm not sure exactly, but those are questions that need to be asked and refined.
Yeah, it's a potential value requirement.
But there's a potential value. How great a value is that? Are we talking about hundreds of thousands? Are we talking about tens of thousands? Are we talking about thousands? Because that'll, that'll skew this a little bit.
And I think it's a good point because what my conversations with Chief Predet are, if you go to 20 years that we included in our projections, when we're at the end of 20 years with that vehicle, it's kind of like the 93 pumper. We've had it out there for about 20 grand now and it's been out there 53 years and we can't get anyone interested in it. When we use them for 20 years, it's about a zero residual value. Would it be a better model to go to 10 years or 15 years, keep a residual value that maybe it's worth something, we can move it and that would lower overall capital costs?
Yeah.
I think that's a great question, Mayor. I just, you know, I think that would fire...
So it's just one of those things, because when we're looking at those ones, that might crunch that a little bit, it's some of those things that we need. And we're talking about going forward and we're talking about asking for a millage of our communities, we've just got to have everything, all our ducks in a row and what those possible costs could be, because...
Would it be, would it be a potential savings of hundreds of thousands of dollars if we sold that 10s of those?
To be honest with you, I wish I could answer that question for you. It's going to be in a ballpark around hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't have any debt now.
But it is going to make up for the half million deficit by selling.
It's going to be easier to replace equipment, be able to buy it faster.
We're going to have to be able to use a million dollars to buy a new truck.
Yes.
Right, but if we have, again, if it's 200,000, which was a number that's clouded throughout to me, so I know nothing about the cost of trucks, except that we did save quite a bit on our last purchase. That came down, first of all, we got a good deal on the Pierce Arrow and then we got better savings on it at the time. Who knows if that will repeat itself, but it's all those things that we do need to look, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of things that we need to look at to go forward in a, in a comprehensive way so that we can explain, if we're doing this, that we explain to our community what's going on. Because another question I would have is, you know, whether taking, keeping, we're doing our six minutes, so we're doing that with three. So if we get four, do we need four? Can we continue that model? Without getting four, can we get to that timeframe, arcus that time getting to a fire going to increase over the years? Do we need as many part-time? I mean, I don't know the answers. I mean, I don't know the answers, but those are some of those things that we definitely need to look at, consider and see how it changes these numbers, because, you know, it's a good place to start, but we've got a lot of work to do.
Yes, Ms. Heiser.
Yes, I do want to say that in terms of the valuation and the market value of the, of the major equipment that we have, we already have that information, depreciated net book values that are accumulated. And I had that information, you had that information, it's in the audit reports and Yaman Yul has detailed analysis of what the equipment costs are and where we are. For example, if we took a look at a piece of equipment that right now could be at a 10-year or 15, if that, that would be a good value, we could look at what the determined net book value is as of the end of this year and then see, for example, if we have a net book value of $100,000 and the market value is 200,000 and they're, they're looking for equipment, I think that would be a trigger for us to say, we reserved more than enough, our market value is higher, and then we would have a procedure where this would trigger the sale of the equipment and identification of a new one. So we have the data, we have, we don't have to create anything that we don't already have, it's here and I can put that together.
Very good. Any projections, Chief, on, you know, one of the questions was, you know, projected growth, I mean, do you see growth in township and added staff? Do you dare make any projections?
Well, one of, one of the, one of the concerns that I have is that where the number one station is housed right now in downtown, the part-time staff, when we have larger fires trying to come into the station, have difficulty getting there because of the traffic for the timeframe. Is that play, is station one an appropriate place right now? It's questions in the future, we have to look at traffic patterns, what's the growth in the south end to the north end of the township? Is it splitting stations apart, maybe two man stations to run into the city? If you look at the map that we have over there on board, most of our calls that were in between eight to 10-minute response times are further out into the, into the community, which would naturally take place. But if we were to maybe take a look at changing where the stations are placed, could improve our response times also.
Are there, are there certain triggers that population requires additional staff?
Not that I'm aware of, no. It's, it's time studies and, and traffic patterns that you're moving.
Because we do have additional developments that are underway in our township that are not near the city necessarily, they're on the extremities of township.
Right. Yeah, they're in a planning stages, when it started getting built and then, actually, they're obviously going to put a demand for services, just like what the police did when Walmart came in, it would be the same for us also.
Probably everybody's seen Tech Village and what we have on the plans there. Emerald Falls is back under construction again, which is on the ball. Any other projections that?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I just want to, maybe I'm staying for the first time or just reiterating, we're making these projections on equipment, capital equipment, we don't know what mandates EPA is going to come through and that's why a truck that cost us $450,000 in 2010 now costs $600,000. So now we've got to get urea tanks and stuff like that that we didn't, that they just all of a sudden decided, well, every diesel truck has to have this now. That's a major expense that we could not capture back when we started. That dramatically increases the equipment. Every year, they're going to come out with new regulations that will put a higher cost on our vehicles.
Very good point. Make sure we understand that.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Todd's point, long as it got brought up, we're just from a historic standpoint, the 2000, or the 1993 Pierce that we're talking about here that they've got for sale, myself and Chief Harms, and I looked over here and I don't see the two firefighters that went over there with us, but like, I'm older than dirt now. You know, we went to Wisconsin and actually drove that truck back because we saved on the delivery.
Right.
About to maybe even one of them, year old is me sometimes.
I don't remember.
Year old, I don't remember. My point is this, we developed, Jeff Hardy, City Councilman Jeff Hardy and myself, developed the original, the first vehicle replacement schedule, right? We bought that pumper for about $200,000.
Yes.
We built a three and a half percent, CPI was running around two and a half to three, so we built a three and a half cushion. Everybody, anybody in finance knows that three and a half percent money doubles in 20 years. So that means that we anticipated replacing that truck in 2003, 13, at $400,000. You guys took delivery in 15 of a pumper identical to that, other than as Todd said, the regulations and standards, for about $750,000 out?
Mm-hmm.
So we only missed it by 350,000 bucks. I'm just saying, as we're doing, this is a great thing, right? But he couldn't mind and Todd hit that right on the nail on the head there. We just, we got to do our best, but even with that schedule that we didn't have prior to that, right? And, and the township and the city both had a really choke on when we went to them and said, look, you got to start putting this much more in. We never had a vehicle replacement fund at that, before that. And, and it's still really short, right? It's really short.
Very good point. Ms. Lane.
I'm going to play them with a role here because I have a son that is a full-time firefighter. You can talk about equipment and I want them to have the best, but more importantly, I want those men and women going home to their families safe. And I know it takes a certified driver and a firefighter to move any truck out of any building and they have to stay outside of every fire unless there are two others there to go on in. So I'm not ever, I will be the mother bear and you're between me and my cub if you try to cut any firefighter, because as I tell them, they are the cheapest thing, dollar for dollar, of any service we offer.
Search trucks, something like that.
Because they go all the time, even if God called them first, they'd say, sorry, I've got a fire.
Between me and Mike, I'm futureing a cut.
My grants, I'm just putting stuff on my.
Sorry, but I don't, I believe it was the mayor that was mentioning, do we need, did we need a fourth full-time fighter or stay a three? I'm, I don't mean to speak for you, but I don't believe she meant that we go down to not having a full staff in the building. I believe her intention was, we just use full-time firefighters, part-time, excuse me, paid-on calls to supplement like we are today.
I'm just asking by their ways. I'm just clarifying where this one individual in this room stands.
I can't, like I said, I can't speak for my, I'm fairly certain I can speak for this and not intend to.
I'd like to expound a little something that Mr. Carl said, if I interpret it correctly. Did you say that it appears that the mileage is going to have to increase from where it is today going forward for the next few years?
For the next 10 years, yes, we have to. And there's no ifs and buts. Five years.
Where are we?
No, I understand. Five years, based on our performances, we've managed to go forward and we've accomplished a lot in terms of the missions and so forth. But with the 10-year projection, which I agree, you know, we're going to have to go up, it's as simple as that. I can't determine what exactly that is, but it's, it's, the very least is one, that's, but I don't even vote on it, I'm just giving you the opinion.
Oh, you'll vote on it.
You don't vote on it?
Oh, yes.
The township will vote on it.
There you go. Any other projections, Dennis, that we have that?
No, I think you'll see, I mean, there's some graphs that were included, I mean, it just showed the operational costs again, based upon a one and a half percent annual increase and, you know, you heard Jesse Kent, I try to be as conservative as I possibly can be on inflationary pressures on what's going to be the cost as well as for labor and healthcare. I mean, you guys all know, sit at this table, I've projected 4% increase in healthcare for the next 13 years, I think it'd be 18% next year. I mean, I, I don't know, or then again, maybe Trump care will give us all free healthcare forever and we don't have to worry about it, we just saved a bunch of money. I don't know.
Could have.
But I base it on what I think is a pretty conservative 4% increase for years. You'll see, you know, one of the sheets in there is that equipment in the annual capital reserve, you'll see when I took the 368 and I ran it across, just to show that where our purchases would be a given year, where we would have to actually put some money out. You know, I think that we could control it this way and then we're not going to have to go out and bond funds and have debt service on that. And if we are able to get to the point where we consider capital reserve where it needs to be, that we could actually manage this without having to add additional debt service to it, which would be bonuses instead of looking at, you know, oh, no, we got to buy a 1.1 million dollar truck, now what?
Ms. Lane, you had mentioned as far as when this would need to be on our ballot in order to.
Depends on when you want it to go on the ballot. My opinion was, and as a clerk, we don't like specials, but we have to renew the millage by 2019. And I don't think it's good to go on an August or a November ballot when we're at the bottom of the state and everybody else's ballot question and renewals for the county. So I personally am willing, as a clerk, to have what I call a May special election in 2018 and, and say to the people, we're grand blank, we want the best and put the millages, because we have a mosquito millage that has to go on the ballot next year. I'm saying, put grand blank first and vote for our fire department and in our case, that's February.
I'm just asking that question because I'm, I'm just looking at our next meeting and when we want to have that in timing. May, others may have other opinions, but I know you wanted ours the earliest, but in order to have it in May, you would need to have a language submitted by February.
Right.
I'm just giving people a perspective of where other people may feel differently, that doesn't need to be on until later, but Mr. Guzak?
And so just ask Mr. Latta, because I thought Mr. Latta was working on that to determine, because there was a, a difference in the timing between the city and the township. And I thought you said, could you go and do that for us?
Yeah, well, Mr. Griffin and I will have to get together and pour over the taxation statutes, because we have to make sure that we're, we're, if we're tie barred again, we have to make sure that, that our collections, that we have different collection dates and different levy dates between the city and the township. And, and so what we need to do is make sure that we give each municipality the opportunity to meet whatever timing requirements exist. And so what that, what I'm suggesting is, I'll, I'll have to contact Mr. Griffin very soon so that we can go over our options or limitations as far as a tie bar and a future collection. But what I, what I do want to say is that this has to happen very quickly. We have to, we have to understand what our millage target date is very quickly and, and from a legal perspective at this point, just based on what I've been able to research, we're, we're going to need to probably consider on the township side, something earlier than the last available or the second to last available. So, and again, I'll, I'll dig into it a little more with Mr. Griffin and we'll make sure that we, we give you plenty of buffer. But I, my suggestion is that even though Kathy, for different reasons, has suggested being prepared to go as early as May of 18, I think we need to, we need to act with that haste. And whatever it is, it is, whatever amount it is, but I want to make sure that, that we're able to take the time, pick the election we want, make sure we've got our levy dates proper and before.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Heiser and Superintendent Dimonup, what I've looked at in all of our paperwork, and this is a number that I've kept in the back of my mind, and I'd like to get your ideas, but one and a half mil, would that do it?
On the long end, instructor, I have to study the reports that were given me here. I'm at one right now. I want to look at the projections. I just received this package today and believe me, I'll go over it.
Yes?
One with, I'm just going to clarify, you're saying one with no match or?
Oh, I'm saying one and a half total, not match.
Tom, I'm asking Mr. Heiser, what he would suggest, is that with a half mil match or?
Let me read, yeah, it would be with the half plus another half and the contributions would remain the same from the township and the city.
So, so you're saying one mil for the city, millage, one mil for the township, millage, a half a mil from the city contribution and a half mil from the township, right?
Yes.
So I'm getting that, so it's, we're, we're talking about three mills.
No, one and a half.
One and a half.
One and a half mil, that's the number that I've got in my mind, but one and a half, everyone pays on one and a half.
For each, oh yeah, okay, for each.
Everyone pays, every taxpayer pays on.
Mil and a half.
Mil and a half. So that's the number that you have here at two?
Yes.
Mil and a half, Dennis? I'm sorry, Superintendent Dimonup?
So I would say that, yeah, one and a half mills would certainly get it on, on the conservative projections that are put out there. But again, I think it needs, I put these together so that we had some talking points to move forward. I think that we need to dive into a little bit deeper in the projections. I think other people are going to have some opinions on where my assumptions were and if they were too conservative or if things are too aggressive, I don't know. I, I think it, based on this, you know, we're talking 512,000, 13 years from now, it would be a shortfall at our current funding level, you know, additional half a mil, because we're funding it at one mil right now, additional half a mil would certainly allow us to have that with a minor question.
Mr. Ramsey?
Hey, when we talk about millage, I think that thing we all should keep in mind, is what the residents prepare. It may not be, it may not necessarily be what we want, but what do we think they want to vote for? Mr. Carl.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, it depends on what we put in the budget, if it's, you know, capital expenditures, if they're going to be part of the fire budget or what have you. Yes, Mayor.
So I'm understanding this, that one of the things on the table now is that you don't go for renewal, because the renewal will not cover us. And we're going for a new, a new one mil millage. And possibility of that, when we look at the numbers, we all digest it, we all come back together and say, this is what we're, you know, what's palatable to each community. But that's what we're looking at, we're not looking at a renewal. Or are we looking at putting a millage on and if that doesn't pass, we still have time to run a renewal? Can you do that, Walter?
You can split it.
Well, I'm saying, if they're talking about, they're talking about, they're saying, we're, we're going, let me explain this, because I want Walt's input here. We're saying that what we're talking about here is a new millage. We're not talking about a renewal, because that's off the table, because we can't add anything. The renewal is .5 and .5. Point five, you know, a .5 mil is the renewal of our 10-year.
That is true.
Okay. What they're talking about is, I'm understanding, is a new millage.
An increase, many increase in the millions than the present they have.
Well, but it'll be a new millage.
It'll be a new millage.
It'll be a new millage. So it'll be, we're not asking, saying, well, you're paying .5, I mean, that'll be the talking point, but we're saying to the community, we're asking you for one mil for fire. Let's just say.
Well, you're paying a mil right now.
No, no, you're not.
You're not, one at a time.
It's .5.
No, but it's still a point, it's still a mil, because you're paying half percent out of your general fund and a half percent on the mil, which makes 1%.
Well, wait a second, but the total is that, right? But are you, well, I want to, I.
Well, I'm not talking about matching, I'm not talking about using any of our general fund money, I'm just saying a mil and a half and then you guys split, you know what I'm saying, all together.
Well, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, because I want to understand what I'm saying.
What I'm saying is, maybe, Scott.
Here, let me see if I have this right, but I think we're, we're talking the same thing here. That, I think what's, we, we don't know what, what the total's going to be. We need to crunch some of the numbers, we need to figure out where we are in capital expenditure and what have you. But I think what we're talking about, you know, that was thrown out, let's put it that way, is that a taxpayer, regardless of whether they live in the city or the township, would pay a mil is what was thrown out.
Right.
And then the contribution from the township would be half mil, contribution from the city would be half mil.
Which comes out to one and a half mil.
But I would hate to say that that's a cut in stones, because we're not kind of, we're a task.
All together, you want to have.
And whether you call that a renewal or new or whatever, that's not really.
It's, it's not, it's not a renewal though. I mean, that's one thing that we need to understand. I want, and you're understanding?
The verbiage, the verbiage on the ballot, because we are not saying a half a mil, will say to the people on the streets, we're asking for a mil. And then when you start saying, but it's only a half a mil increase over what you're paying, you know they're going to be confused. But the ballot language, because you're going, if we decide to go for one mil from the voters, will say a new one mil levy. The other option is go for a half a mil and then play around and have a separate half mil, new millage and start playing that game over the next 20.
mill, new millage, and start playing that game over the next 20 years and have to have two questions on the ballot all the time until they end at the same time and then they're both renewed.
I'm just asking the question correctly. I'm just saying, if we did this in 2018 as a new millage, okay? That's a new millage. If it should go down, we still have the renewal possibility, because we haven't renewed it, for 2019, because otherwise we have a fire, we have nothing. We don't have to worry about lines going down. Well, that's what I'm, but that's what I'm asking. We would have to do that. We could do that. We could ask, what I'm asking you is, we could go for an increase and it could fail, we could go for a new millage. Okay.
I'd like to ask Mr. Laddie, I think you have the answer for us.
Well, no, and the mayor's correct. It would, and we would sell, if, for example, you went for a mill, which would be an increase over what we currently had, it would be, would read on the ballot as an increase. You would have an opportunity to try again with that mill or some lesser amount if you wanted, in a subsequent election, if you wanted to. Though, I don't think it, I think we've got to make sure that we don't consider it just a situation where if the mill, if we propose the mill and it fails, that we just automatically drop back to the half mill, because based on the projections we've seen, it won't work.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, David. I'm just asking, if we do that, we have the option, if it was a huge failure, that we could go for a half mill, because something is better than nothing, because we're going to be left with a lot of nothing if we don't have any millage.
I've got a question to tack on to that, is that with regard to tie-bar. Can you explain what that means and why we would do that or why, is it necessary?
Well, what we did, and this, this is, I don't want to get into history that's not just particular to the Fire Commission, but we tie-barred them so that, based on the idea that each resident of the city and the township would pay the same millage, and we, and again, recognize that we have this joint enterprise, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have one of these millages pass in one entity and fail in the other and cause a pretty difficult imbalance to overcome. The problem though is if, when you tie-bar them, you've cast your fate to both municipalities and God forbid, if it fails in one and passes in the other, then you don't, you don't have a financial problem to solve, you have a planning and a contribution problem to solve. So we felt initially that the tie-bar was the way to move forward and to make people understand that their contributions are relatively the same. And I think that that concept has worked relatively well and it would seem to me you'd want to explore that process again, again with a couple of technical issues that Mr. Griffin and I have to talk about.
Tie-bar just means, asks to pass. If it's not tie-barred, passes one, dies in the other, you have a political problem.
And just historically speaking, I don't know how long everybody's been here, but we had the Parks and Rec mill, which is what brought all of this together for tie-baring, because the millage passed in the city and did pass in the township. And it was, you know, it took a lot of time to work that out, to everybody's satisfaction, which I think we did, to everybody's credit. But that's, that's one of the reasons historically that we tie-bar, so that we don't get into that kind of a situation.
Okay.
We've done it.
Well, we've discussed a lot this evening and I don't know if we came up with any solution right now, but we put some information out and put questions out there that I think our board can go back and look at and examine. Is there anything that we didn't discuss that we should have? Are we looking at future meeting dates?
I think we should talk about Flint Water now.
Looking at future meeting dates, I think we had spoke about what, was it, we're looking at our next meeting.
Well, we've talked a little bit about task force, but with all the information that's come by, I think we need to go to our, each group and discuss all of this, bring all of this to, you know, for our whole council to hear, your whole board to hear, and then get back together to hash out where we stand. I think actually a task force wouldn't do us any better than that.
What the mayor's talking about is that we have, at one of our breakfast meetings, we had discussed the possibility of having a couple of township board members, a couple of city council members meet to go through some of these things. And, but also, we need, we were talking about a future meeting for discussing Parks and Rec, the next joint venture that we need to take a look at.
Except I guess at this point, there's so much on the table with this and we're talking about a deadline that needs to be met. The others have managed to go on for, you know, quite a few years. I think we need to take care of this and we need to take care of this together.
Right. But what I was going to mention is, we were looking at June for our next meeting and covering Parks and Rec, but what we could do is cover fire at that June meeting, because June still works. Does June sound like a reasonable timeframe for...
Let's pick a date, let everybody look at their calendars, because otherwise...
The fourth, the fourth Thursday of the month would be the Thursday that we'd be scheduled.
Could we alternate, when we do our meetings on Wednesdays, could we do an alternating basis and do a Wednesday meeting? As I said, I have most of my Wednesday nights first, the city council.
Is Thursday not a good night for you, John?
Oh, absolutely not.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Do you remember summer?
Absolutely.
So where are we looking at?
Is this May or June? It's still April, Joe.
Is that probably the Wednesday, the last Wednesday in June?
What about the 21st, because that, that's our, we have your kids.
I can't, no way at this.
Is it your Wednesday?
That's Cub Scout. But I can bring my Cub Scouts.
Yeah, would be good for them.
I think the last week of June.
Northward the government badge.
No, Cub Scout's not. June the 19th, is that a good day?
That's a Monday.
That's planning commission for us.
Well, Tuesday.
What about the 26th? It's a Monday?
Okay, 26th.
Only once.
How's the 26th work?
That's the night before our Tuesday meeting.
We're two votes, John. John, we're two.
We're saying so far, Monday, June 26th, 6:30 at the senior center.
Is that, will that, can we make that work?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Haven't heard any negatives and they've had enough time to...
June the 26th?
Okay. Let's do the 26th, 6:30.
So we have to check in to see if the senior center's available, right, Jamie?
And I appreciate the graciousness from the mayor to allow me to run the meeting and flip-flop that out of next meeting. Yes?
Before the next meeting, what should we call the other board to talk there? So that the house will be in the ass of, it's not included in the agenda or...
Yeah, I think, you know, the agenda we have for the meeting roughly outlines, I think, we, I think we agree that the current model of our operation, you know, with paid-on call and full-time has been successful in reducing our times. So I'm not sure we need to have that on the agenda, but, and the goals, we, I think we agreed, the goals have been achieved. But I think everything from there down is pretty much the topics. I might be wrong, unless there's something we need to add, but from like item four C down, I guess is probably unanswered questions, right?
Yes. Yes, that's right.
So I think that's our list of things to work on, be able to come back and have maybe some consensus from our board as far as our position for...
We have, who's in control of what building?
Who's in...
Yeah. Is that the responsibility of the commission or each individual municipality? And the biggest thing is to look at all the numbers and see what we all think about for a millage and what we think individually is a millage that, you know, are we for a millage, against a millage, or how much? I think those are the, those are the critical points to come back with, to talk about.
The numbers, the numbers that we have are numbers that Mr. Heiser and our chief have come up with, so we all have the same numbers we're operating on.
Well, if we have any questions, we can ask and get back to each other, saying, oh, we clarified this and that's not right.
So if somebody, you know, has a different projection, but I'm sure that, you know, the mayor and I will be meeting and talking for our next meeting, so that people have some new information or we come up with new information.
And just be shared, so we're all on the same page. We want to get together.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So we'll, second.
Okay, motion second. On favor?
Hi.